I call this meeting to order at 5:48 or something like that. Is there any public input? Lance, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Are you having a nice summer?
Yes.
Good.
Thanks.
Hot enough.
Yeah, so I haven't had a chance to meet the new superintendent, so I just wanted to come here and introduce myself. Yeah, my name is Lance Tucker. I'm a former employee here. And my real mission here tonight and for the last nine months or so has been to create an opportunity for equal access to the childcare program that you offer at the high school for the district. So, brief history, probably 15 or so years ago, Teachers Association got in their contract where they could receive free childcare for their dependent children. Sometime after that, there was a couple cafeteria workers who were looking for the same benefit. They asked the board for that, and that request was denied. I think on more than one occasion, because I believe there were two separate employees in separate years that were asking for that same benefit. Now, say five or six years ago, I forget, there was a principal here by the name of Mr. Rashid who had a child of three or four and was looking to send his child to the daycare. Well, he did and got a bill. He was not happy with the bill and he wasn't going to pay it, so he went to the superintendent and complained, and the superintendent wrote a letter to the daycare and said that he could receive free childcare. Not contractually, the only ones that are contractually allowed to receive free childcare are those under the teachers' contract. Now, in the last few years, the parent and the parent support staff secretaries, I believe, have through negotiations asked for the same benefit, and they've also been denied. So, they're basically paying, they're paying, I think, 90% of the fee. And there's a clear distinction in wages, where the lower wages earners are paying for their children to receive those services, and the higher wage earners are not paying, not being required to pay, to receive the same services. So, I guess I would just ask you, now, there has been some, I wouldn't say much, much has been done. Supposedly, a committee has been formed by the former superintendent. That was some months ago. The committee has yet to meet, I'm actually a member, I haven't received word from anyone about it, about when we're going to meet, about anything. So, I guess since you're new here and you have a lot of experience out here in other countries, in other cities, I wonder if you have any experience with this sort of model for supporting a daycare and for charging the users?
I, you know, I've worked not so much overseas, the place I worked overseas, the early childhood programs were usually separate from the school, and they were usually privatized institutions, certainly back in the States, yeah. I've worked primarily with Head Start, you know, early childhood preschool programs that were partially Head Start funded, a blend of Head Start district funds. Normally, normally those programs were set up, the number one purpose of those preschools was to provide services, particularly to students that were, that needed an extra help, as Head Start implies, get them better prepared for the beginning of school. I haven't, honestly, Lance, I haven't, I haven't worked in districts where tuition was a, was any kind of an employee benefit for anybody, so I don't have experience with that part. This is, that's a different model. Yeah, and I'm glad you're here, that I have, actually, on the agenda, I think I'll talk about, my report is preschool, and the committee that hasn't met, but will, in the very near future, to, I think, look at a number of issues with this.
And the other thing I want to mention to you is that, since I had brought this to the board and to the superintendent, there has been a large list of other possibly possible concerns related to the childcare that were added to my simple one concern. And that's the reason why nothing has really happened, nothing has changed, because it's just been delayed, because, well, now that you mention it, we've got all these other things we would like to look at as well, but we're still not looking at any of it.
Correct.
And...
But we will.
And, well, I've already heard that.
Yeah.
So, so, for example, I'm a resident, so what is frustrating is that a former principal who made in two years $160,000, contributed $0 to the childcare program or the school district, okay? As a resident, I paid $3,200 just in school taxes in those two years, and about $7,000 in childcare payments in those two years, over $10,000. So, I would like something to happen. I don't want to hear we're looking into it.
Correct.
It's, it's an inequity. I don't even know if it's legal for a superintendent to, to hand out free tuition to whomever employees he chooses. That's a question I would like answered, actually. I think you should look into that, because the taxpayers haven't approved that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I think you sense my frustration.
Well noted.
Again, nine months, and...
Sure.
And here we go.
Sure.
So, if you could, separate that from this committee, which isn't meeting, and make it equitable, and create some sort of equal access, so we do not have barriers to entry. It's 2016, you know? It's not necessary.
Certainly, and I'll be happy, I'll be happy at your, also at your convenience to visit with you further, if you'd like to come in.
I have a lot of ideas...
Yeah.
...to make this very simple for everyone.
Sure.
And I would love to meet with you.
Let's do that, okay. Thank you.
And I did meet with the past one.
Okay.
This is where we've gotten.
Sure. Yeah, and I certainly appreciate and understand your frustration and the sense of, you know, quality, you know, and those issues, I get that. So, I'd love to explore this with you further.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lance.
Any other public input? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes of August 1st, 2016.
Remove.
Second, second, sorry. Any further discussion, corrections, or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Okay, the manifest beside me, if you want, anybody would like them?
Sure. That's a little one.
Yeah, it is.
And as the, as the manifest ago.
Treasury's report was next.
The Treasury is not going to be here tonight, he was going to try to attend. His report for the month of July shows we had a beginning balance in the banks and investments of $756,000, the receipts at $947,000, a little bit of interest, clear disbursements of $696,000 for an ending bank balance of $1,6,582.74. Again, as always, bank receipts and recorded revenue are not necessarily the same. As is typical in July, we only had one payment from the town, but it's a larger-than-normal payment, because we have bond payments to make, so we front-loaded a little bit, and then that will go back to our two payments at one beginning with August. Although not on your agenda, let's do, with an update on the underground storage tanks. As the new tanks were installed and being inspected by the Department of Environmental Services, it was determined that in each case, the meter root systems, the monitoring gauges, and the reporting systems were not functioning properly, wires were old and stiff and brittle, so it was recommended by the state that those items be replaced. Mr. Landry accommodated the inspection. There is a concrete cap on both of the tanks, but at Lakeway, because of where it's located in the back lot, we had to asphalt over the top of it. That was not included in the original plan. Mr. Broder got us a couple of quotes and agreed to the less expensive, quoted $4,600. At a previous meeting, you heard about plumbing inside the boiler rooms, that it needed to be accomplished of both of them, and approved the movement of funds to cover those, a matter of that too. So, at this point, we had cost overruns at Lakeway of $10,577, at the Academy of $7,675. When we did the warrant article and uncovered the funds in the prior year, we did provide for a small contingency. There was some concern that there might be contaminated soil that would have to be remediated. Fortunately, we did not run into that, so we actually are only over the original allocation of $12,000 by $12,000. Again, you have approved a movement of $5,000 for the plumbing previously, so I only need to be looking for $7,200, which we can find in the current budget, and it's within the superintendent's authorized level. So, we can satisfy these bills, and Mr. Broder, okay?
Okay, so because the superintendent can move the monies?
We can do that.
We have the total of 7,500, so this is only 7,200.
Right, yes ma'am. And if that affects you, you should find a separate manifest for just the overages. Not knowing what may happen, I set out to pay the amounts on the original contract as a separate item from the overages, in case there was a further delay.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board?
And I think, I think it's worth noting, too, that the final cost was within the range of the original bid, within the 15%, that there's a bit of a, a extra amount put on to allow for unexpected, unavoidable costs, in which these clearly are.
So, moving ahead, unfinished business, Lakeway Parent-Student Handbook and Staff Handbook. Do you want to stop, or you want me to?
Well, I got your list and sent it to us. So, basically, I noticed that we have to update some dates for the policies in any of those. We had a few typing errors, grammatical errors, and we have to update the names. One teacher's name was spelled wrong, I forgot that, and we can now add the, we can change the "to be determined" teachers, we know those names, so, as well as updating the district mission duty values.
Yep, and it's, that, Crystal, just to clarify, it's the school board.
School board.
Yep.
Yeah, I think Joanne has it in her manual, it's the current one.
She does, that is the current one in there, there's, but the one that was in the other handbook wasn't, the one we adopted on August 4th, but...
I think this came to you before that, so...
Yeah, it did, that's why, so...
All right, so I, yeah, that, those were the things I noticed, I don't know if other people noticed.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Page 16, I forgot what it references to, but it was like you give three days' advance notice to parents.
The student-parent handbook?
Yep.
Where am I looking?
Oh, this is... Oh, maybe it's the staff handbook.
There you go. They don't have it in there.
Yeah. It's the staff handbook on page 16, underneath timelines, number six, it says, "Complete a request for field trip money form at least three days prior to the field trip," and I guess my question is, is that enough time for the parents to accommodate any extra fees?
We usually, typically, when Patty and I work together, we have that determined beforehand, before they...
Okay.
We try not to have students have to pay anything.
Yeah.
But Patty and I worked with that last year, that was the timeline that she needed in order to write the check to the facility from the cash accounts.
Teacher, teacher needed to give the notification, they didn't need that.
So, that's for her to write a check out to the cash accounts for them, to bring with them if they don't accept POs. Well, a lot of places accept payment ahead of time.
Yep.
Canaan Mountain, for example, they had moved the tran, they didn't take the checks, but some of those kinds of things.
Okay, so other things I've already given you on page 22, I guess it is, under illness or other unplanned emergency, it says, "Please call blank."
Well, we can fill that in now, actually.
Okay, you can fill that in, okay. And I think, on page 26, I guess my question was, underneath the purchase art, is something about, does each grade level have a budgeted amount, and does it go through the grade level team leader prior to going to the principal for signature?
Yes.
And you also, I noticed in Joanne, she had a CPR first aid team, you don't have that?
We don't know on yet, we're still trying to collaborate with her staff to be trained.
Okay.
So, that will likely be in there for next year.
Okay, great.
There's one question about the team organizations.
Yeah.
What, I know the grade level teams make total sense to me, what happens for the people who are not in a specific grade level, like, for their PLCs and that type of thing?
The specialists have the PLC.
Okay.
The Title I team and Special teams both have PLCs.
Okay.
Danielle Cook for ESL has joined Title I in the past, and we're looking at expanding hers to be just the ESL population, so would Stephanie Smith of High School, if you think of any of those, Kelly, so, we're trying to streamline those a little bit better, but they all have, they all do have a team.
Thank you.
And I think the rest had to do with policies, so, I'm good. So, any further questions on the student, we're talking about the staff handbook?
I don't have any others.
Okay, I'm good. Jimmy, good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Student-parent handbook for Lakeway, any questions on that one? Okay. Great, any questions?
Good.
Jimmy, all set?
Yep.
All right. So, do you want a motion to approve those, or?
Yeah. Yes, please, with permission to make the changes noted here.
Okay, who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Lakeway staff handbook and Lakeway student-parent handbook as presented and amended with the, you know, with the corrections.
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you guys have it. And I think the next one was the Daisy Bonson High School staff handbook. So, any questions on that one?
I just wanted to ask this afternoon.
I have kind of a similar question to what I asked Crystal about how, what the team structures are for the, for the vertical teams, and sort of how the specialists fit into that and that type of thing, so at the high school, what the model is.
That's just a general question, are you on a different page, or?
Well, there, it talks about your vertical team structures and the team leaders and stuff in the staff handbook, and so, and I was, and it says when they meet, and it lists mathematics, science, English, and social studies, and then there's interdisciplinary, and so I just wondered, is interdisciplinary like the art teacher, and how, I just wondered how it worked?
Interdisciplinary is all the fine arts and phys ed and everything.
And like the librarian?
Yes.
No, math, what?
Librarians on the English department.
The English department.
Okay.
But, vertical teams will meet, and the vertical team leader, whoever that, it changes from year to year, would be responsible for taking care of budgets, and so they have someone to report to, and...
And they set an agenda, each meeting in eight minutes and whatnot?
They will meet with me once a month, the vertical team leaders, but the vertical team leaders will also be attending leadership, they are the leadership team with the principal and assistant principal.
Yeah, I saw that. And so, how about foreign language, where do they go?
English language.
English language, so it's...
Yeah, okay, so they all go together. And how does this work with the CTC, or does it not? I just wondered, you know, like, does this book apply to the CTC teachers, or how does this work?
Good question. As far as the vertical team, we meet once a month as well as a team, at least once a month.
Okay. All right. Because I know the CTT teachers are, you know, they also kind of have regular middle school classes that they run, so, which are, obviously, you know, when you think of those PLC questions, you know, what do we want the kids to learn, you know, and how do we measure that? That is all things that gets applied in those classes, you know, so there's probably opportunities for collaboration there. I just wondered how that worked. All right, and on page nine, goal seven, you got, which is the school board stuff, they just somehow got, there's a typo on it. Reasonable budget is twice, so page nine, goal seven, if you read that over, you'll see it.
Okay. I guess my question, Joanne, on the last page, 56, first aid, are those personnel listed, are they the current personnel for CPR? Is, no, yes?
These were the people who attended the last, the last course, but there are going to be other trainings available, and we do have to add some more people in there.
Yeah, because I was wondering about one person in specific, Clackey Rafter.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Any further questions from the board members?
Oh, I do have one other question. What time do staff have to be in the building in the morning? I just wasn't clear on that. What's the arrival time? Class start at...
You have a very good question.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking the high school, because I thought it said, it said a time, I think, at the elementary, but it said at the high school, classes begin at 7:45, right? Kids are entering the rooms, so what time do teachers, what's the arrival time?
What time should it be?
No, I go, what do you tell your staff, so people know what time they have to be to work?
It's not documented anywhere?
I didn't see that in here.
It's not, the day's not defined in the contract.
Well, my understanding was it was set by the building principals, the arrival time, so, but...
Half hour, that's what, that's what I tell people, had a time. It does say 7:40 in there, but I know...
Right, that's why I didn't...
In the past, it's been a contract question, so, it, it kind of needs to be cleared up. We talked about this even in administrative's meeting, that perhaps prior to the first class, either your class at the high school or whatever goes on at Lakeway, that it's kind of even so, you know what time you have to start, because the day's not defined, so it's up to, you're right, it's up to the building principal to say that. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I, I guess...
So, just a little bit of history, it's never been defined in contract.
Okay.
Past practice has always been a half an hour before, a half an hour after.
Okay, that's helpful, that's always there.
That's standard practice.
Yeah, it makes sense, you need some time to sort of, if a call came in from a parent or something, you know, so you can be prepared for your day, so, okay.
That's what I...
Okay.
Any further questions?
I guess could be put in the handbook. Well, right? What time to come, you know, I, I don't know, but...
I think it becomes a contractual thing, if you put it, if you define it. I think that's another...
As long as we're applying the same way at K3 Pub, I think it would be okay.
Okay.
Right? So, should I change?
Well, it sounds like it's maybe something that has to be looked into, I don't think we should change it on the fly, you know, here, but I was just sort of wondering what the, what the expectation was, so, because we have...
I didn't change this, this was in there.
Yeah, we have a very clear policy for our children being on time and when they arrive, and, you know, so that expectation with that attendance policy has all been worked out really clearly, so I just wanted to see where we stood for, I thought...
I think one of the challenges is if we say 7:15 and they say 7:40, that becomes an issue.
But if we say 30 minutes before, 30 minutes after, before your first...
Maybe we can, we look at for next year, I don't, it seems like we're too much coming into this year, you know, but I just sort of wondered if people knew, but...
We could probably change that, we could change that. 30 minutes before, we can work out there.
Well, we'd have to make another change to this, if you wanted to do that now.
I don't, I just wanted to know what, what the staff was told, really, so, I think it's too late for people who are driving their kids out of daycare and things like that, they have those kinds of things set up, so if we're going to make a change, I think it would be too late, like, for them, for some people, maybe, to accommodate that, you know, like, if their childcare doesn't start at 7:15, and all of a sudden, we're going to tell them to be there by then, you know, so...
I think that's up for discussion between the elementary and the high school, CTC, and we can just, we're a smidgen to, to be appropriate.
I agree.
Okay, do you want a motion to approve Daisy Bonson High School staff handbook?
Remove.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, let's see, we have, there you go. Next on the agenda is the procedural safe guide for children with disabilities.
Okay, nothing, nothing, big change here, the basic, the wording of the policy hasn't changed. There is a, this is something we need to formally accept every year as part of our assurances to federal funds, IDA funds specifically, that we've, that we've agreed to the assurances. There is a little bit of language in one of the handbooks, not in, not in our policy, I think Kelly, as Kelly shared with you, where they changed the wording a little bit, softened the wording a little bit on, on one of the, and that's the only statement that was even affected. So, we're just asking that, again, the board affirm, it's, it's a support and adherence to the procedural safe guide.
And I think what happens, last September, I believe, we had that change, it comes from the Department of Environmental Services?
The Department of, the Bureau of Specialization.
Okay, so they sent it fourth of September, this year they sent another one, the Cal in February, so, the changes are all in that big handbook she gave us last year. So, she just has to let us know, because I don't know when it's going to come next year.
You can do that.
On the agenda.
Yeah, you know, that, that, that's a tiny, the tiny little, it wasn't even a procedural change per se, it was semantics, and that could happen tomorrow.
So, every time they change...
So every time they change wording, we have to...
If it affects the policy, which we, we adopted, which this does, this, this simply affects the wording of the handbook itself, and it's a tiny little change, it's, it's designed to simply give some clarity to the, to the process whereby someone can ask questions, if they have questions.
I, I think it's a handbook that you have to pass out to the parents?
To all parents for any evaluations or...
Right, yeah. So it just explains that and the procedure she'll take care of, so we just have to approve the procedure and...
Mm-hmm.
Do you want a motion?
That, that we've reviewed the policy? Is that what you want?
Yeah, reviewed and adopted the procedural guidelines.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we have reviewed the policy by HBA dash R, procedural safeguards for children with disabilities, as well as the small change in the guidelines.
Second?
All in favor? Other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, do you have special education report?
Well, it's a little more...
The kids are behaving well?
Yeah, they've been great. Enrollment, I had listed, we had a hundred and twenty-six students enrolled that are on IEPs, and that actually is down to a hundred and twenty-three, but I expect next week it to be back up, so, I mean, this is the time of year where students are moving in and out, trying to get ready for the start of school. Just a couple updates of things that happened this summer. In July, the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, we had several teachers from across the district in One Para attend the Wilson Language Trainings, which was phenomenal for them. They came back very enthusiastic. It's a great reading intervention program, so I'm looking at possibly using some grant funds to purchase some of the kits that go along with it, but...
What grades do we use that with, Kelly?
It's actually district-wide. There were different levels that I listed.
Yeah.
So...
I didn't get the report, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it, okay. But Foundations K, obviously kindergarten, there was Foundations I for first grade, Foundations II, and then Just Words is three through twelve, and Wilson Language is four through twelve. So it actually does capture the entire district, so... For the Wilson Level One Training, there is a follow-up that needs to happen before those teachers can roll out that part of the program, so... And then I did attach the comments from the teachers for the summer school program. I'm not gonna go over all of those, but we had...
That was, that was interesting reading, I enjoyed that.
Yeah, it's good perspective from each teacher, and also, you know, we had a, a pretty good turnout district-wide for summer school issues, so, yeah. I don't know if you have any questions on that?
I was just thankful for the report, because we don't know what goes on, so this is good insight.
Thanks, Kelly.
So, Joanne, I think you have a report.
Well, our school is looking very wonderful and clean and doing very well at stripping floors and trying to get the sides all in, so it's, it's nice to see the custodial staff really take pride in what they're doing and, and they've got some of the equipment to, to work with, so I thank you for that. Working with George and Donnie together is really, really a good thing. There's a lot of, a lot of things really being fixed and getting done, and I can see some real progress there. George, I know, has met with the custodial staff to, to explain about the lines of communication and how that works, and, you know, they feel like they're, they're being cared for and, you know, taken care of, so I think, I think we should know that. We have two new staff members, Melissa Jones, who has been hired for our visual arts program. She comes to us by way of SAU thirty-six, and she, I know, brings a great wealth of knowledge and has expertise in photography, and I, I think the kids will be really enthusiastic about her. Melissa Otis has been hired. She actually had been teaching for three years in Costa Rica for physics, chemistry, and physical science. She's also a native of Meredith, New Hampshire, and a graduate of Newtalex High School, so she has experience in teaching international baccalaureate classes, so we're really excited to have her, we're fortunate. We have movement of our staff, Jen Carbone, moving from assistant, from instructional coach to assistant principal, and we've been collaborating together and working on orientation of new teachers and, and handbooks and things like that, so that's, that's been very positive. Opening school, we have seventh grade orientation coming up on Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, at four o'clock, so we'll meet with parents, we'll go over their schedules, they'll go through their lockers, see where things are, and we'll, we'll do a little much more, much more extensive walk-through of where, where things are, as opposed to the freshmen, who will also come in at six o'clock that evening with their parents. Schedules will be given out, we'll go through the lockers, but they, they kind of know where things are, so, and then we'll, we'll go over some handbook items. And then, staff development opportunities, Jen and Katie Williams attended Powerschool University at Baltimore, Maryland, from the August eighth to eleventh, and that was to kind of look at what else Powerschool can do for us and, and what we can do with it, so we can, we can work with it a little bit more efficiently, and so, looking forward to learning more about that. Jeremy Brown attended the UNH State Leadership Summer Summit in, on UNH in August. This is the one where we all went to Keene, but Jeremy was the only person to, to go to that, cause we're trying to streamline where everybody's going, so he'll be sharing that with the leadership team and, and some things that we can work on. Vertical teams in science, special ed and English have met this summer, they've already collaborated on curriculum, and we've got a few other people that are meeting as well, so they've already met to kind of do some alignment and, and work towards competencies, so that work has already been started. And just want to mention about our advisory groups, we, we kind of structured it a little bit differently, so we have like Mondays are academic day, and Tuesday, it's more guidance and oriented, and Wednesdays, maybe a study, a study group and, and if you need extra help and that sort of thing. Thursday have more one-on-one, academics also can be involved, but we're talking also with the financial literacy for sophomores and the, and the freshmen really getting a real, really, really concentrated, like, what do I want to do with my life and what career do I want to go to? So we're having a little bit, much more rich conversation with our advisory groups. It's a little bit more structured, and Friday is, really focuses on relationship building. So we think that that's gonna be more successful than our last advisory groups. And the Academic Support Center, really pleased that that's going to be open again. That will start right at the beginning, well, actually, the second week, with the six forty-five to seven thirty in the morning, Monday through Thursday, and three to four with the content area teachers, Monday through Thursday, so history, English, science, and math, and then we are going to do extended library hours, so it'll be four to six PM, so that's, that's important, we felt that people really use that. And on August eighth, I went to Burlington, Massachusetts to begin our NEASK information. Our, our visitation is set for November fourth through the seventh, two thousand eighteen. We have been assigned a liaison, and I'll be taking a, three other faculty people with me in October to do some more training. They're trying to streamline kind of the event and also the self-study, but we'll be beginning that pretty, pretty shortly, or at least getting ready for it, so, and there's a pre-self, self-study that goes along with that, too, so... We have a lot of teachers going on, on visitations to prepare for NEASK and for our visitation. I'm going to Vermont in next April, but I'm gonna try to go in on another, another visit, too, so I'm, I'm prepared as well. But our dates are set, so I wanted to share that with you. And, and our enrollment is at three thirty-five. We are having a little bit of problem with the rollover from sixth graders going into seventh grade, it shows up in the, it, it's rolled over, but it doesn't show up in the building, so these figures might change a little bit, so there is, as accurate as I can get it at the moment, but we're working on that, so...
Do you think you could give us some, we've got a budget meeting coming in early September, right, or mid-September? Do you think at the next board meeting, Joanne, or even just emailing, as you could email us the accurate enrollment numbers for when school starts?
I can do that.
That'd be, just so we, you know, we're aware if there is a, if there is a change or whatever, so...
I don't think it's gonna be drastic.
Okay.
I can email that, too.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
I thought you were gonna ask me about the cost of NEASK. Cause I do have that, too, but I figured I'd leave that for another time.
You might, that's what, that's the...
Yes, yes, I will.
But you want the enrollment figures?
I just think we should, yeah, I'd just like to know that, you know?
I think we should have enrollment figures from Crystal and Joanne.
We're having the same problem, so what I have on here, we registered eight the other day, six more left, so probably after the first week.
Yeah, that's fine.
We have about eight, Josh H told me, eight new students enrolling already, so it's, you know, it's, so it's, it's, it will change, but I can get that to you, sure.
I can, eighth grade student.
Am I good?
Good evening?
Good evening, Al.
Could I ask you a trivia question? Maybe you wouldn't know, maybe I didn't know. When's the last time there was a board meeting in the...
He is a historian. I was probably here, the historian. Probably nineteen, let me see, nineteen ninety-nine sometime, two thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, my report this, this, this month, you see our goals, and we're really gonna focus on this year, more so than the others, on assessment of our program competencies. As you know, we have program competencies in place, and we've been doing some work statewide, and we're gonna continue to do some work with Southern Regional Education Board to help us better assess our competencies and probably be piloting, and I'll come back to you with some ideas on how we should be reporting grades, and thinking of grades in terms of rolling, grades for assessing competencies, but definitely this year, we would, whatever we do, we would report out in both ways, so we're not gonna change anything, but we just wanna experiment, better ways to report out, so that's gonna be our, our focus this year. Staffing, I'm still looking for fire science. I do have a meeting tomorrow with Meredith Lund, she's from the New Hampshire Fire Academy. She's a field captain, she's coming up from Conquer, she's in charge of all fire science programs, and we're gonna meet with the chief, and we're really gonna try and brainstorm a solution to this.
Good.
So it's important to the state, we're gonna have some that come up from Conquer, probably two members, so they feel it's important, too, so we've been trying all summer, but we're gonna have to be a little creative here. Enrollment, and again, we don't have our enrollment yet, the way it works is we would get feedback in the spring from sending schools. We know our enrollment for most in pretty well, but from sending schools on who they intend to send here, and those projections were positive, a lot of things changed over the summer, so, and the start of our school year differs really from school to school, and the regional doesn't start until after Labor Day always, so it'll be a week or so before we firm that up. Just that, post-secondary connections, we had some meetings over the summer for manufacturing, for articulation agreement, for running start credit, college credit through Lakes Region, until White Mountains, I guess they're gonna start a program in the future, but right now they don't, and something you should know that we, every year, we have to update those articulation agreements, so we will be, have new agreements for all of our programs that we can, either running start or articulation agreements for our programs. As I mentioned last time, I think through White Mountain, Community College, Verndy, and New England Wire Technologies, together, we're gonna offer a manufacturing class in the evening, it's a college class, gonna probably offer one night a week, so they're in charge of, it's a college class, they have put an ad in the paper, they're looking for enrollment, so hopefully that's up and running, but it's been a great partnership with our advisory team trying to develop this, the curriculum for this, and actually, one of the employees at New England Wire Technologies is gonna be instructor, so that's, that's gonna be great. We continue to, oh, I jumped around, so I just want to tell you about one thing that was pretty exciting, we met last year with Judy Burrows, New Hampshire Territorial Foundation, they manage a lot of our scholarships, and there's two scholarships in town, the O'Keefe and the Gold Scholarship, that our students can apply to, and some of these they apply to online, but this is, this is the first, I think. Within that, that scholarship requirement, it allows us, you know, to provide scholarship monies for students taking running start, and that's typically not a lot of money, but a hundred and fifty dollars typically, and I think it's fantastic, because it's, it's really good for maybe first-generation students who want to attend college and may not be able to, just gives them an opportunity to take a college class, while they're in high school, receive college credit, and provide, receive scholarship monies for that, and if they're a completer, meaning they finished two years of a, of a program, they're, they would be eligible for another thousand dollars to go on, so this is pretty exciting. We met in the spring, we met this summer with Judy Burrows to firm that up, so that's pretty exciting. It just has to be around STEM. Another good thing that happened this summer, we, and this actually began last spring, I went down to Conquer to meet with the DOE and the Department of Labor, and, and you know, for years, we had an apprenticeship program here, and obviously, that's dependent upon the economy and, and, you know, things started to slow up in terms of construction. They seemed to have picked up, it went down last spring, and talked about maybe beginning, starting it again here, they, the Department of Labor did a little work, trying to determine whether there's a need, they felt there was a need, so we applied, we received a grant through the DOE, so now we're able to offer apprenticeships in electrical, plumbing, and manufacturing, so we're trying to get some interest out there, and hopefully we can have classes beginning this fall. It's something we've done for years, and it's, it's great to be able to do that again.
Al, is that an evening thing?
It's an evening.
Okay, I just don't know how it works.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's for sixteen-year-olds and up.
Yeah.
Typically, you, you have young men and women entering the field that accompany, would, would pay for their apprenticeship.
Okay.
And they have so much time to earn their license, so to speak. The state had tried doing something totally online for these folks, wasn't a great model. You know, people get busy, typically, these are folks with maybe young families or, or you have other commitments, and once you get home, there's not a lot of quiet time maybe to jump on the computer, so if they know they have to be in Leopoldon on Tuesdays and Thursdays and make that commitment, that seems to work a lot better, so...
So, did they meet like twice a week when we had those programs?
Yeah, twice a week, yeah, yeah.
There was what, six, eight, or seven, nine, or something like that?
Right.
And who, who, who does the training?
We have to hire, it's part of the grant, hire electrical instructors, plumbing instructors,
The district hires them.
Right, well, yeah, yeah. And I have a nomination, someone to, to help assist and, and direct some of this apprenticeship work, that has some experience, so...
We used to have a lot of that going on in the schools. Years ago, we did, a lot of rooms, you'd come up here in the evening, and a lot of them were being used.
Yeah.
Kind of fell off a little bit.
Well, the rooms were being used back in, back in the day for apprenticeship program, ran at State College.
That's right.
And the community college, the community college and Granite State have their own space now, so they moved out and apprenticeship went away, so at least we'll bring the apprenticeship back, and actually partnering with the, with the college, bringing the manufacturing back. So, these partnerships are great, and just wanted to let you know, because we had some major attendance here, some important people, we had a meeting on seven fourteen, just to discuss manufacturing, and our superintendent was able to make it, and met, you know, some people who are quite important in the world of manufacturing in the area, in industrial park, and so much that the New Hampshire Department of Resource and Economic Development Commissioner, Jeff Rose, is in attendance, so he really thinks things are happening in Milton, and good to have him here, and listen to the way, the way we really cooperate, so that was good. And then I had a, a meeting, and some of you, I mentioned, too, with Barry Londonville, Isom Bryan, and Danielle McDevins of local radio stations, WLTN, Kiss One Two, and Eddie Moore, and they were really there for two distinct reasons, Eddie Moore is there representing the committee on cable company, and had time for that to be renewed, so I don't know if he's, if he's contacted you, he stayed to me, he's going to contact members of the board because they, they need to be involved, and started this renegotiation of cable contract through the town, the first time it occurred, we did reap some benefits with some monies to purchase equipment, he's trying to do the same for us again, so that would be, that cable equipment, something that when, because as you, as you know, the town receives some monies from the cable company on a yearly basis, I believe, but part of when they renew a contract, they also contribute to, to beef up the infrastructure, and they'll probably do that again, so we may have some monies coming to the school that'll keep you apprised of improving equipment in broadcast for Channel Two.
Yeah, Eddie spoke to me when we had the open house a little bit, and he said he had a meeting with you, but he didn't say anything about having a meeting with the board, so keep us apprised.
I will, I certainly will.
What's the, like, the timeframe on, what do you know when it kind of gets wrapped up, or?
I think they're in the process of having those conversations out to town, but I could certainly do the superintendent, talk to the town manager, and see where they are, and Barry Londonville was on site because he has the rights to a shortwave FM station that he would like to give to the school that we manage. What I would like to do is meet with my broadcast teacher, and then get a sense of the student body, whether or not they like to manage a radio station, students listen to music very differently now, you know, so we'll have to make sure there's, there's an interest there, but you do have the ability to stream the content, and we could decide on the content whether we want our audience to be high school students, or whatever age, we could determine that, that audience, and, and, and develop that content. There's also an opportunity to, you know, present either lectures, or maybe students, we've talked about a lot, about courses in public speaking, we can do that on the radio, there's some opportunity there, explore it, I want to see it to student interest, just to open the air. Just, you know, quickly, staff development, we have a teacher attend Project Leadway training, a gateway for the middle school, so as you know, Project Leadway, teachers have to be trained in, in courses to be able to teach them, and to be allowed to use the curriculum as well, so that's been done, we, two teachers, and actually, Mrs. Carbonell attended some training last week from SREB, and sponsored by the DOE, on project-based learning, and we talked about last year about Lakeway teachers, we had a presentation from Project Leadway, teachers were pretty excited about attending some training, there's some issues this summer, and things fill up rather quickly, and then we talked about hosting a site for, for area schools, and we're going to go ahead and do that in October, third, fourth, and fifth, is that it? Crystal, I gave you the brochure, I just gave you the brochure.
Six to eight was.
And looking for a site, and working with Mayor Laterno, who's Project Leadway, and making contacts with some folks in industry, they stepped up, and New England Wire Technologies is going to host the training, and they're going to offer tours, it's going to, it's going to be a nice little package, because hopefully, we'll have, not, not just from our school, but we'll have twenty, twenty-four students from, I mean, teachers from the North Country in attendance, so they're able, able to learn about the curriculum, as well as go out into the, into, into the wire mail, and really see these, the robotics at work, so it'll be quite exciting, so thanks to the New England Wire Technologies. Just some program, quickly updates, as you know, we had a couple of summer camps, manufacturing and health science, and very successful this summer, and all programs in the CTE will be evaluated, it's called, it's like the NIESC visitation, but it's called monitoring, and it's usually a five-year cycle, this year, we're up, we didn't, you probably didn't realize it, last time, we were monitored when we went through the process for the renovation, so we went through all of that simultaneously, so they're trying to change their format, it's going to look more like a NIESC visit, but it's only going to be a couple days, and it really starts this fall with me providing the information, but they will be here on site in April.
Lucy?
Lucy.
Thanks, Al.
Dale, I think you're up.
All right. My version will probably be a lot shorter. All right, couple things from the technology side, first off into the second week, so behind, not really on anything, Matt, Carl, Dana, they've done an outstanding job of getting it, getting us ready without a director for the school year, the Chromebook implementation to go one-to-one is ready to be deployed, and as soon as school is back in session, our plan to meet with the tech committee, both K through six, as well as Daisy Bronson in the high school, try to form one district committee to determine how we're going to execute the one-to-one, and if we are going to allow kids to take them home, and if, if we need to purchase cases, or something along those lines. We, over the summer, switched our internet service providers, which also is going to help with the, with the rollout of the one-to-one, we've from eighty megabits per second to five hundred megabits per second, so it increased, you know, six point, or six hundred and twenty-five percent over what we had, which is more than sufficient. All the Canon copier equipment is now installed and fully operational, a few teachers, as they, as they come in, will have to be set up, but all of the drivers and everything are set up on the server to be pushed out to the computers and everything, will go ideally as smoothly as possible. We met with a local networking company to actually discuss multiple ideas last week, some backup opportunities, some managing our network remotely, so forth, nothing finalized, nothing specific has been returned to give you any update as to what they can offer, or what we can do, but the, the technology team definitely feels that we need to have some backup solution, and we've started to create other things, for instance, we have one server at the high school, which runs the internet for all of the high school, the academy, as well as Lakeway, and when that fails, or has failed in the past, there's nothing for the internet to go to, so everybody, it goes down at once, so something that Matt has started this week, and hopefully, will be fully operational by the first day of school, is that if that server does crash, the backup server at Lakeway would take over the internet while that one's under operation, so it doesn't disrupt any classes or so forth. And then lastly, I just had supplied you guys with a, a plan that I sort of put in place myself, I like to be direct, organized, I guess, and just in the first couple of days, because I believe I wrote this last Tuesday, you know, just some of the things that I saw, a lot of the stuff in the thirty-day plan, with help from others, is already completed, and, you know, the sixty-day plan and ninety-day plan is going to require us to, you know, have the tech committee meet, discuss where we want to go, and then I'd also like to see students involved with the technology committee for their individual feedback, so, no, that's short and sweet, but that's all I got.
Thank you for jumping in.
Yeah, welcome aboard, Dan.
Thank you, it's good to be here. Any questions?
Not yet.
Hey, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, we talked about the enrollment numbers earlier, three seventy-one was on here, I scribbled it out and wrote three eighty, and then today I wrote three sixty-seven, so we'll just wait until the end of the first week, the office staff has been extremely busy with that work this week and last week, so I'll get you that number by the end of the first week of school. Just the curriculum and staff development, there's been a lot of training going this summer, Kelly mentioned some, Al mentioned some, our tech integrator, Amy Cope, went to a week-long conference in Colorado and came back just buzzing with ideas, she's been working all summer, getting ready to help the teachers implement instruction with their Chromebooks, she's also giving a training on Monday, the twenty-second, for teachers with their Chromebooks, she'll have them there to use, we built the carts, so everything is ready to go for them, and they'll have some instruction on how to start that out with the kiddos. She's already been booked into some grade levels as well to help them teach the first couple lessons with the Chromebooks, so she's really excited. Math, I'll skip over the reading, Kelly mentioned that, a lot of Lakeway staff participated in that, math training right now, this week, Mahesh Sharma, who visited us in March, came back for a week-long course, we have twenty-five people enrolled right now, it's for the whole entire week, and tomorrow and Thursday, there'll be actual students attending the course, he will teach the lesson and be observed by the teachers, and they'll also get to interact with the students, so they'll be able to apply some of the things that they've been learning this week, they've been really excited about it, and there's also a training that happened for Eureka Math, which is a supplemental programmer using Pieces and Parts of, and the K and one teams went to that, to help implement some of that stuff. Overall curriculum work, you can see that here, I have this binder, I don't know if anybody wants to see it, you're more than welcome to it, the grade level teams with Tracy worked all summer long to create the non-negotiables by grade level, they worked as a vertical team, so they worked K through six to create these, their math, English and math are K through six, and science is in here, K through eight, beginning in September, her plan is to roll out the social studies curriculum, which is also K to eight, so that will be added to this eventually. The wellness committee, we will be meeting on the twenty-second with a consultant to update the Lakeway wellness policy, moving forward, that may be opened up to a district-wide policy, but for now, she's coming to help us update our current policy, the food service coordinator that is new, Annette, will be joining us, too, from Fitzville, so we'll have all the people there that need to be there with the consultant. Just some other pieces, there's an on-your-mark book that the district is reading, we participated in the Alice training, the administrator, so there'll probably be more information coming from that eventually, and we participated in crossing guard training today, so we are ready to open the school year. Personnel, the only, right now, the position that we're looking to hire is the library paraprofessional, Dana and Amy are interviewing, they interviewed today, and they'll be interviewing tomorrow, there's also a few parrot positions that Kelly and I have been working together with to fill as well. New staff, brand-new staff to us would be Dana, which, you know, he's been working very diligently with technology and helping us out in that respect.
Glad to be here, Dana.
Learning the Lakeway ropes, we're glad he's there, too.
I bet you are.
And we have first grade Lori Adams and fifth grade Donna McCusker, who will be introduced to the district next week, and some internal movement, the only new faces Hilakwe, Dana, Donna, and Lori. And then at the bottom, just some events that are coming up, and I referenced this summer school, I had attached the reports as well, Kelly and I had some teachers that worked together, they combined the specialized and regulated populations, so some of those might have been overlapped responses, but they're all in there in one way or another. The kindergarten crew was busy, Mrs. Bryan, her staff was very, very busy this summer, so they appreciated having extra sets of hands in there. The Chromebooks Dale spoke about, we're all ready to unload those on the teachers, they're in the carts, they're in the rooms, and Amy already has lesson plans ready and presentations ready for the staff, so we're really excited to see how well that goes. Kindergarten conferences are on the twenty-sixth, letters have already been mailed out to families, and we've had several kindergarten packets be picked up, despite a little number indicated here, I think there will be a significantly higher number, I'm hoping, for the first day. Back-to-school night is already scheduled, that will go out first day with the students, it's less of an open house, and more of a meet and greet for the classrooms and the teachers in the evening, because the first day gets a little crazy to do that. And then, the summer projects at Lakeway have, are still going on, the tank removal, the roof repair, the front office is pretty much brand-new, if you want to come down and look, it looks great, the security upgrades, the dumpster relocation, the gym looks awesome, Terry and his crew did an amazing job in there, it was absolutely excellent, so that's it, that's where we are, we're ready to have some kids up in the ring, so, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think the next item on the agenda is personnel, we haven't had a meeting?
No, we haven't. Said, no, we haven't.
No, we haven't, facilities, do you want to talk about your little thing, or whatever, or whatever?
Millie and I went on a tour yesterday of, of most of our buildings.
Should have my fit bit on.
Yeah, those custodians probably should have their fit in, all the people and Dale hustling around, but it, things look really good, you can tell people have been working super hard, and so, and, you know, I guess for facilities, we're looking forward to having regular meetings start soon, so, so that we can prepare for the budget and be well-informed before we, you know, as we make those decisions, so.
Good.
That's what's going on with facilities, everybody.
Nothing for policy right now, anything, what do you say?
We have our next meeting scheduled for next Thursday, so we'll narrow down the list and begin compiling report, so we have it ready sometime in September, so.
Your turn.
My turn.
Your turn.
Well, welcome everybody to the new location, I get, you said it was, been a while since we met over here?
Right.
Was it, was it warm or cold the, the last time, you remember, was it, I, I think it won't be, it won't be as warm the next time we meet here, I'm guessing, right, it will get cooler as we go, as we go forward, that's what I'm hearing, maybe. But it's still, it's still sort of summer, anyway, it's good to be over here, I know that as we prepare for everything, I know it's pretty, pretty close here in terms of people and all that, but I certainly, certainly want to reiterate the fact that in the future, we know we'll have times when we'll have larger gatherings, and we'll accommodate larger gatherings in the, in the future as well. Open house, meet and greet went really, really well, and I just wanted to comment a few things, thank Jerry, Jerry Drapoff, for, for washing the building, making it look great, and Vivit, Amy as well, for the plantings that she put out there that look nice in, still look nice, we're still enjoying.
We're still enjoying that. The work of those two individuals is noted with appreciation. And as well, as well as the building and grounds crew that, that came and did the, put in the extra work to make the open house, and the building, the building looked good that day. It certainly, as, as has already been indicated through the building tours, there's been a lot of work done, certainly throughout the district this summer. Alice training, had a week or so ago, it might, this has been my first Alice training ever. Came away with a bloody shirt. Those who were there can attest to it, those little pellets. Dana sent out this great email. I just had read the email, went back, oh yeah, that's right, I was supposed to wear like a, like a sweatshirt, maybe even an undershirt, not just a light cotton shirt, so I got it. But I'm happy to report that the laundry removed the blood and I'm okay. But the Alice training, the Alice training was great. Sergeant Gardner, thanking for his time. For, for Chief Smith as well, for their support. We certainly look forward to working with them and Louie and everybody else. You know, bottom line is that we want the, we want the school to be safe. We want them to be a safe place for people to work, certainly for kids to attend, for parents to be involved, and, you know, I think that we, we walk that, we walk that line between we don't want to be over alarmist and, and everything, and at the same time, we have to face reality. And I think we all know that. I think we're, I think we're kind of beyond the age of innocence there. We know that things can happen anywhere, anytime, and we need to be ready. Just, I just, I just want to acknowledge my administrative team, this office team here, we've had a lot of meetings already. Had one today. There's a lot of work that goes into planning, communication, trying to make sure that everything is, is going the best that we can, and so, you know, thank everybody for the, acknowledge the time for that. Summer staff, we've had lots of, of work done, as has already been noted by our buildings and grounds. Buildings are looking great. Teachers, we have them coming and going all the time, you know, so acknowledge those who are here, those we, we see, those we don't see, the work that's being done behind the scenes. I know a lot of, a lot of things happen that we don't always see, we don't always acknowledge, but goes into a successful year, and I certainly want to acknowledge that. You all got the, the draft for the, or the, the letters to the, to the employees that went out via email, also was mailed. Board, again, on, on Wednesday, you're certainly invited to come to any of this, if you want to come and hear Dr. Marzano, that would certainly be a good thing to do also, but Wednesday's when we'll have all the faculty together, and, and Ann will have some remarks. The board, the board is certainly obviously invited to be a part of that and, as well, and the rest of the board, and, and then I'll have a few remarks. And we're gonna go through the, the things that are just, are just mandatory notices, training, how to, where to get training, things that are, that are important for employees to know regarding confidentiality, mandatory reporting, bloodborne pathogens, the typical things that we have to make sure that our employees are, are well, well on top of. We're gonna do something after that, on that, that Wednesday. Also, I think it's really important in that we're gonna invest a little bit of time, 60 to 90 minutes, with mixed groups of teachers, doing a little bit of pre-work before Dr. Marzano comes the next day. And we were talking about it today, and it follows a fairly, fairly well follows a, a well-known reading strategy called KWL, and that's kind of the approach that we're taking there, and that's on this whole topic of assessment and assessment practices, what, what do we know about it, what are, what are our practices, you know, what are some questions we have, and then after Dr. Marzano talks, we'll do a follow-up the next day after he talks. What did we learn, you know, what questions do we still have, and so on, so on. Good, good, a very, very nice activity. I think we'll frame, we'll frame the, the work before he comes and after he worms, or after he leaves will be, I like the activities that are being planned with that. Friday's non-official workday. I know there'll be a lot of people around, though, certainly doing the things they need to do, prepare for Monday, first day of school, right? Yeah, we'll have a lot of kids, I can't wait. I miss the kids. We'd be really, really happy to see that. It's a joy working with the adults and preparing for the adults, but it'll be fun to, fun to see those halls full of kids and, and classrooms full of kids and soccer fields with kids on them, and, you know, on and on and on, all that goes into the great, great school that we have. Some program notes, I have three things I want to just share with you, some thoughts on a couple, three areas, one of which is, is the preschool program. You know, and I, and again, I appreciate Lance for coming. I know he had to leave, but I will reach out to him and take some time and visit with him about his concern to make sure that, that he's heard as he was here, but I'll, I'll also do that. But, but I, but I know there's a committee that's been formed. I don't know as much about it at this point as I wish I did. It's not that it's not important, it is important, but it's something that we'll be working and I'll be putting some time into and trying to get that group together, making sure, communicate with the board a bit again about the group and the, the purpose of the group, why, what they're looking at, the questions they're trying to answer. I think it's really important when you have a study group, it's important to go in knowing what is, what are the questions we're trying to answer here, what are the things that we need to know. So that'll be, that'll be something that I'll be putting some effort into. Driver's education, this is sort of the, the opening, you know, my, my bringing this to the board at this point is a discussion item with, with an eye toward, you know, looking in the, in the weeks and months ahead toward the feasibility of, of developing some type of a program to support driver's education in the community. Joanne has done a great job. She's, she's recognized the need, I like that. She, she's helped already with being responsive to the requests of the community, and she's already done a lot of the legwork, potentially that could go to, could make some type of a driver's education program here a reality. However, as, as with most things, the devil's in the details, and there's, there's a lot of questions to be asked, a lot of work to be done, but I certainly, I certainly think that, you know, many high schools' driver's education is an important part of their program, is certainly an important community service, something that families need and value and, certainly something that we'll need to put some, some work into going forward, and trying to see the feasibility of bringing that program into, into fruition in the near future. The instructional coach program, and you know, due to the personnel changes, you know, I think that, I just want to talk briefly about that, and I know there's, there's work to be done going down, down the road. And I said, you know, I think that, I think that questions are asked, and rightly so at all levels, I think with anything, with anything we do, any program we have, it's it, believe me, it's not just the board that asks questions, the community asks questions, there's other teachers that ask questions, people, the stakeholders in general are gonna ask questions about the things that we do. This happens to be one of the items, just that we're, we're working through and looking at. I know the board has spent some time, some considerable time in the past, you know, with this particular program and trying to, you know, get a good sense of what it does and how it fits into your overall program. You know, I guess, I guess is, as I start to look at this, I don't want to get too long-winded with us tonight, we have things to do, other things still to work through the agenda, but I think, you know, I don't think any of, any of us would deny that schools have changed dramatically in the 21st century. Even, even as we got into the 90s, things were starting to change fairly quickly. I think as I, as I look back in the last 10 to 12 years, in general, what I see happening as much as anything is, you know, we, no child left behind, you know, the federal legislation that really forced us to look at, schools to look at how all of our students are doing, not just the average, but how are subgroups doing? And I think in many schools found that the averages weren't too bad, but you had these subgroups that weren't doing so well. And the data, the data supported that, the testing data supported that, the dropout data supported that, so on, and colleagues placements. By attendance, by any measure, these groups weren't doing so well. And no child left behind was one of the, one of the things that it, that it required schools to do, was to look at that, to address those gaps. And I think we, I think we, we know that since that time, you know, the feds have taken a little different approach to that, more that, more of that responsibility back to the state level, and in turn, the states are going back to local level. And I think there's a lot to be said for that. But I think the, the point, the point is that, you know, in general, schools have more and more challenges for a lot of reasons, changing demographics, changing in, in funding, and so on, and so on. More and more challenges, more and more requests, more and more things to do, and, and job functions have changed a little bit. You know, I wrote in here, you know, the, when I, when I started as a building principal, you know, the big, the big push when I did my first principalship in my early administrative years was instructional leadership. The principal must be an instructional leader. The old, in, in the old days, in the old days, in the past, I gotta be careful of what I do with that, I'm now the old age. In the past, though, I think, you know, the principal was the, you know, if you ask most people what the principal does, ah, that's where you go and you get in trouble. You know, I don't want them to ask me here. In my past, if they ask, superintendent is usually associated with one thing when it comes to kids, well, like, snow day. We'll see if that happens here. But the principal is, ah, that's where you go and get in trouble. You know, when they found out I was an English teacher, they start, they stopped talking usually. When they found out I, now as a principal, they stopped doing everything almost, right? But that was the idea, the principal's the, the top cop, keeps everybody in order, manages, okay? And that's true. There's, there's that dimension. But instructional leadership, more and more and more and more. What is gonna happen with this group, this subgroup of students, underperforming, consistently underperforming? What, what are we gonna do with the data when the test data says this and this and this, we, we need, these, these kids need help with this, or this particular student needs this, and this student needs that? It's management of this data, and I, I think, where does that fall? Building principal? Great, building principals would like to do that, but there's lots of other things to do as well. So, yeah, like it or not, and I know, I know people look at this, you know, look at where we add these, these positions and that position, but the instructional coach, as I, and I strip it all away, and there's like, there's a whole list of things they do, but to me, the most important thing that comes from that is sitting down, helping teachers, look at the data, map whatever, whatever testing, I don't know, Newa, call it Newa, Newa here, right? And you call it the map, but looking at that data, what, what, what does that tell us? What, and how does, and not just looking at it, but how do we change curriculum, instruction, how do we differentiate instruction for students? That's huge. That's huge, and I think that, that in and of itself could be a full-time job, no question about it, with the numbers of teachers and students, and that alone could be a full-time job. We'll look later at the full job description, but that's, that's a big piece of it. And so, I think that as I, as I look going forward, I'm gonna, I'll be, I'm an advocate, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, I'm a very much out-front advocate for this position, and I think for these services and this, because I think it fits into the model that, of the 21st century school. And the school has changed. You know, I'm almost ready to stop, so hang on there, it's hot in here, I know, but, you know, it's changed so much. I mean, I'm thinking of testing, I'm doing, I'm going back and thinking of testing, and I guess the best analogy on one of the many conferences, one of the many people I've heard, I, I remember a speaker one time talking about how, you know, testing, testing, standardized testing especially, that was an autopsy. School year was over, we didn't get the data, we looked at after the fact, how did the students do? Okay, that's good. You know, they, they went up a little bit, they went down a little bit, and, and not individual, but as, as a group. And that's kind of it, okay? And then there's a place for that type of data, by the way. There's a, there's also a place for that. But the other part is, is the, the, that's summary data at the end of the day. Formulary data is the data we use on the journey, okay? What do we do with that? What is that telling us? I mentioned Newa, but there's lots of other data that's generated within the classroom and so on, and so on. So, I think that we look to as a, as a huge piece of this. The other, the other thing that I think is important with this particular program, and that is just the, the coaching model, and that is the time spent with the teachers on, now, well, let's try this like new fad, or let's try this, or let's try this program, that's not what it is. It's about research-based instruction. The speaker we're gonna hear next week, Marzano, spent a career on exactly that. He's gonna talk a lot about assessment, but I'm sure he's not gonna, he's not gonna, he can't separate the two. What works? What works in school, right? That's what he, that's, that's his, that's his ongoing theme. He knows, he's an expert in research. There are things we know about, the science of teaching as well as the art of teaching, and that's part of what a coach does and spends that time. And, and again, in a different relationship than, than others, others play the role. So that's the other, that's my, you know, I guess programmatically, you know, looking at three areas that I think going forward that I'll be spending some time with, taking direction from the board, my administrative team, certainly the teachers and the community as a whole, critical, critical areas that we'll need to be, you know, paying attention to as we move forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to piggyback on what Steve, Steve's comments about the preschool sort of committee. I really can appreciate Lance's frustration.
Yep.
We have not been particularly responsive, and I certainly would like us to start to be, respond to this. I guess Dr. Vicfor did make a draft of what Steve, of sort of what a mission for that committee might be, and he did share that with the board. And I wondered if we could talk about that as a board, you know, what we thought about that, so that we could try to get the committee going and meeting. I, I, my thought was that it was, it is too broad, and I know that Barbara Stone and Ann had generated a lot of questions about sort of just the nuts and bolts of how the preschool runs and people aren't registered and all that kind of thing, and I would kind of like to see some of those questions included in it, but I, I thought it was a little bit too broad, and I don't know if we can, what you all sensed was about that.
Well, I agree with what you're saying, and, and I get almost as frustrated listening to his frustrations, because I do feel that we've been way too long in getting back to him with an, or to anyone with an answer. What happened was, he came, he's right, he came in with a simple question, and, well, simple question, a question, and, and it snowballed, it then opened like a whole can of worms, and it was, well, wait a minute, maybe we should revamp the whole thing, and, and then I think he got lost in the, the current. So with the transition, in all fairness, in, in what was going on in the SAU office, I really think it got put on the back burner, and I think it's time to get it on the front burner, narrow it down, get a decision. How, how can it be to get a director of this program to say, what are the procedures? Look at those procedures, either approve them or not, and go forward? We really have been quicksanding this one.
Well, I, I agree. I think that the, the draft, if you will, that Dr. Vicfor gave us created more information that we probably don't need currently, but the questions that Barbara and I drafted from Harvard and responded to us are the questions I really want to get answers to, to see if this can be fair and equitable to staff, employees, and faculty going forward. But there's, there's a few other issues that have to be addressed at some point in time, so I think we could have a little talk soon about everything.
I was, I wonder, or Greg, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. I wonder if we could make a subcommittee on the board to revise those, that sort of guidelines for the, for that committee, and then bring it back for board approval at the next meeting, so that that could get approved, because I, I do agree with Dr. Alice that we need to have clear guidelines for the committee, just any committee the board forms, that's really important. So that was one idea I had, and I'm open to suggestions, if you don't want to do a subcommittee, if we want to do a...
Well, that sounds like a good idea. I think a couple of people could get together and look at all the information they have currently, redraft it, and then submit it to the board for further approval. to the board for further approval.
Well, I think we better have to be aware of what's already in place and what's going on currently.
Well, yeah, right.
You said that you wanted to meet with Lance.
Oh, well.
And things of that sort, maybe we should see, give you a chance to look at it too, and bring it to the table, maybe we should do that. I mean, I, I just don't want to be redundant and, and go over what's already been done by someone else. But I agree, if it's going to take a subcommittee from the board to get this ended, to have an end date, then we need to do it.
Well, I think there's Lance's question and his concern about the equality of providing childcare, but I think the board does have some real valid concerns about how the process works and who attends and all that, which
Right.
I don't think we want to let go, so I think the committee will need to sort of look at both of those issues. So, I just would like to get that, sort of that mission for that committee finalized, so it could, it could begin its work. And that was, I guess we can wait, it'll, it'll, if we wait for Steve to meet with Lance, that
Well, this is the question.
That'll make it a longer time for us to get the...
Well, even if we have just a, a couple of people on a subcommittee to, to pull that stuff together, even though Steve needs to meet with Lance, that's, that can all happen at the same time, and then that come back to the next board meeting for...
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Let's get it going, I think, I think that he deserves a response as well as those that he represents.
Yeah. So who wants to be on the committee?
I'm, I'm willing to do it, some, somebody, and we have to, we have to do it, so, but I don't, it's other, I know it can only be two of us, if somebody, other two people really want to do it.
I'll take it.
So, I'm happy to...
Leslie?
Sure.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
I would jump a little bit, I might be gone.
That's good.
So we're, so we're going to try, but you're leaving, aren't you?
Just for three days, I'm only going to...
Okay.
Oh, three days, a cutback.
Well, no, it's four, but one's a weekend, thanks.
So, so we're going to try to draft, we'll revise that to some extent, and if you have anything big, just email us, you know, that you want us to make sure, and we've got those questions from Barbara and you that you have, I think I have those copies. Okay? Great.
Thank you for bringing that up, Leslie, that's good.
Yeah, sorry to add it on at the end of the meeting, but I, we got to make a move on this, so, okay.
Any further discussion amongst the board, or anything? If not, I have a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public, make, make a motion to enter into non-public under paragraph two, section three of the RSA 91A colon three of the right to know law, or number two, the hiring of any person as a public employee, and for numbers three, matters that would personally affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us the superintendent.
Business manager.
And assistant superintendent.
And assistant superintendent. Anybody else could have the best of the night off. Enjoy.
Second, hold the favor of the vote. Robbins, we get Nelson.